Welcome.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Rennie Pichatelli and I am the Vice Chair of the Niagara Falls Public Library Board. Chief Librarian Joe Longo is with me tonight. Library Board Carmen Dix, a regret that he cannot be here. Other members of our library board are Nancy Ite, Dino Fazio, Michael Borisklaas, Blake McIntyre, who is with us tonight, Guy Prada, and Ken Smith. Niagara Falls City Council is represented on the board by Counselor Shirley Fisher. On September 29th, the library board sent you our budget letter with a detailed breakdown of our proposed operating budget for 2009, which we respectfully request to be approved for final budget deliberations. As you see, our total request for city funding shows an increase of only 2.94 percent, which is below the latest consumer price index. It indicates the library board's continued interest to request reasonable and moderate financial changes. The library is used every day and every week by more than 10,000 people who walk through the doors of our four libraries and by more than 70,000 a week who visit our popular website. We have over 40,000 active borrowers, we anticipate, well, once again, set an all-time borrowing record for our library in 2008, surpassing the last record set as recently as 2006. The largest increase in borrowing is at our new community center library, which shows currently an astounding 13 percent increase in borrowing over the same period as last year. Any additional money we receive from the city or through fundraising to purchase additional books and non-print materials will encourage greater borrowing, as more up-to-date materials in demand by the public would be used. We are reminded that the library use increases during difficult economic times as the public looks more frequently to inexpensive materials, programs, and services, especially for their leisure time needs. The library serves residents of all ages, economic status, educational, and other demographic backgrounds. We advocate on behalf of our readers. Our mission statement is to be an informational, educational, cultural, and recreational resource valued by the Niagara Falls community as a vital asset, enhancing the quality of life by providing free and equitable access to information. The library board asks for your support in 2009 to continue our efforts to provide a contemporary public library service to our community. We respectfully request that our 2009 proposed budget be referred to and approved at final budget deliberations. Thank you for your ongoing support.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to acknowledge the efforts of the library board in doing an excellent job from providing our residents with a quality service and with the expansion that we had more recently at the McBain Center. And I think this is certainly a reasonable request, and I want to refer this matter to Budget, if we could, please.
Okay, motion by Mayor Salsi, seconded by Counselor Diodati, to refer the request to final budget deliberations. Any other questions or comments by members of council? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, motions carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next deputation we have is from the Greater Niagara General Hospital Foundation. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you once again to council for allowing us to present today. My name is John Byer. I'm here once again in my capacity as the Chair of the Greater Niagara Hospital Foundation Board of Directors. You may recall that last year at this time Joyce Morocco and I spoke to you about the equipment needs at our hospital. With me tonight is Michael Somerville. Mike is the Executive Director of the Foundation, as well-known to everyone here in Niagara Falls. We're here tonight to speak to you once again about our hospital and to seek your continued support for equipment needs in our emergency department. In the fall of 2008 issue of our newsletter, I spoke about change. In my message to our community, I noted, "The primary role of the GNGH Foundation is to raise funds to purchase equipment for the GNGH. That will never change." Projects like the renovations to the emergency department and the overhaul of the ambulatory care unit are examples of what can be done for our community if we all work together. We recognize that these are emotional, challenging times, but through our efforts and with your support, we need to help meet the health needs of our families, friends, and neighbors, but we can only continue to do so with your financial support. Some of the equipment at GNGH is beyond repair. We need to replace the aging equipment that we have, which means the foundation will need to continue to raise the money needed to do it. Your foundation is dedicated to raising funds to be used locally to make sure that our doctors, nurses, and allied health professionals can give us the care that we deserve. You can help us do that, once again, by supporting our request for the equipment funding assistance. Mike?
As everyone here is aware, in 2002, the foundation launched a multimillion-dollar campaign to replace the aged, overcrowded, and outdated emergency department and to build a new ambulatory care unit at the Greater Niagara General Site. Our community responded as never before, and over $9 million was donated. The new emergency department was designed to accommodate the latest standards in the delivery of emergency medicine. In preparation for tonight, I called over and got some statistics, and since January through August of this year, emergency department visits totaled 31,281 individuals. In addition, visits to the new ambulatory care unit totaled just over 13,000 individuals coming through in eight months. So, the facilities that were built and that are now put into use are being well-used by our community. However, the story does not end here. Just like other businesses that must keep pace with new technology, hospitals must continually upgrade their facilities and equipment in order to provide the best possible service and care for our patients and medical staff. To meet the current equipment needs as determined by the medical staff at the Greater Niagara General Site, our foundation would have to raise over $5 million. So, if we were to take the list of equipment needs that they have presented us and say on a one-shot purchase, we would require over $5 million to meet that goal. The foundation works throughout the year, through our annual giving, through our campaigns to try and assist in this. Right now, that listing includes almost $120,000 in equipment for our emergency department, including items such as infusion pumps and a new ECG machine.
John?
Over 100 years, the people of Niagara Falls have rallied behind their hospital to help ensure that we have the best healthcare possible for our families and friends. Mike is going to be handing around a copy of our newsletter and sure is outlining the specific equipment needs that we are looking for and a copy of the letter that we submitted earlier in preparation for this. The role of the foundation is to remain focused on meeting the current needs of our hospital. It is not our responsibility to get involved in the operating decisions of the Niagara Health System. It is our task to raise funds to purchase the medical equipment necessary for our doctors, nurses, and allied health professionals so that they can perform jobs to the best of their ability. We're talking about equipment here for our hospital. We are asking you to continue your funding support with a donation of $100,000 to purchase equipment for the emergency department. A new ER is not, without new equipment, is not a new ER. It's an old ER with dressing. It would be similar to adjusting to building a new arena without purchasing Zamboni to clean the ice. Foundation has committed to replacing all of the old and outdated medical equipment, and with your assistance, we will achieve that goal. I want to express our thanks on behalf of our patients and their families and on behalf of the staff at GNGH for considering our request. We have a vision for healthcare in Niagara that will enable our families and friends to receive the care that they deserve. This is a vision that will help us keep the healthcare professionals that we have, attract more doctors and nurses to this region by offering more, by offering them the state-of-the-art facilities and equipment so that they can deliver the higher standard of care. Please join with us in making this vision a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Fisher that has a question or comment.
Thank you. As you realize, there's been a lot of discussion, but mine is a personal one.
Thank you.
A week ago, I had to take someone to hospital. You haven't given us, you've told us how many people have been admitted or gone to the emergency, but you have told us what the length of time is from the minute they walk in the emergency door to the minute that they are able to leave. There's a long waiting time.
There is.
Yes.
And that varies from patient to patient. It varies in severity of what it is that they, as I'm told by the doctors, what they present with. And so, it's very difficult to be able to say you can be in and out in 10 minutes or three hours, and unfortunately, that is not unique to our hospital. It's a very, very common occurrence right across the province, not just locally.
I'm sorry to say that I am very disappointed. We spent 10 hours in the emergency with an extremely sick person and nowhere to lay them, and I asked if there was a pillow that could be of help, and the answer was, "I'm sorry, we don't have a pillow, and we don't even have enough for some of the beds." I did not appreciate that, and I want to know, is there pillows or is there not pillows? Thank you.
Those are questions that we're not in a position to be able to answer, but they're questions that we can take back to the people responsible, to the chief of the department in the emergency medicine, and so on.
I think you've heard from the public, they're really concerned at the time that they wait from the minute they walk in the door to the minute that they have been in some kind of treatment. And to be in such severe pain and be told to sit in a chair, you cannot lay down, and not even a pillow, is a pretty devastating time for family. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, I have Counselor Carrillo that wishes to make a comment, and then Counselor Diodati.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Counselor Fisher's probably the reason why we need to help the hospital.
Thank you.
We need, we need to help the hospital. They are in need of many pieces of equipment. They're in need of more staff. They're in need, so I think it's important for us to get behind them and help them as much as we can. I also have had the opportunity of visiting the emergency ward on a couple of occasions in the last little while, and I certainly am impressed with our emergency ward. Our emergency ward is, is first-class, obviously needs more equipment, obviously needs more staff, and there's probably some kinks that need to be worked out, but I think that, you know, as a community, we have to get behind them and help them as best we can, so I'd be glad to refer this to our budget when the appropriate time.
Okay, I have a motion by Counselor Carrillo, seconded by the mayor, to refer to final budget deliberations. I have Counselor Diodati and Counselor Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, we thank you for being here and for all the work that you do on behalf of our hospital. Only my two cents of advice that I would suggest, especially in light of the contentious issue that we're facing right now in the community, and obviously, we need to smooth things over so that our hospital doesn't suffer because of what else, you know, for what's been going on. But the one suggestion is, you know, having NHS point-of-view frequently ask questions with their response, it certainly doesn't give the image that our foundation is separate or independent from NHS thinking, you know, it's propaganda, and it's just frustrating. I did get this in the mail as well, and I just thought to myself, "Keep it foundation. Don't get politics involved in it," you know, because if this is going to truly be for our hospital, because this is a perspective from the NHS, not from general population. So, I mean, I'm very supportive, and I want to see a support for our hospital, but just my two cents, I had to say something. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Appreciate that, and part of it is trying to get information out there from all the various sources that we have. And again, as in John's comments, our role is to focus on helping the community and the hospital staff to get the equipment that they need to provide the care and appreciating wait times and the concerns that everybody has. We're still trying to stay focused on our role of providing the funding for the equipment that's needed to help the staff there do their jobs.
I appreciate that, and if I could, just to say, and I agree, I'm just saying, that takes you off of that focus, and that's, I'm just saying, just kind of gets your back up a little bit, especially, it sets it.
Certainly is, yep.
And it's just a perspective, I think, just focus on the patient and the community, and that's probably better.
That's appreciated, because putting these together, any comments like that are...
Okay, Counselor Fisher and Counselor Wing.
Very quickly, after I vented, I also want to make sure that you realize by the time we got to the nurses, even though they worked to rule, they were excellent, and the doctors, excellent. We couldn't have asked for better, but up to that point, it was very upsetting.
It is.
And I appreciate that, thank you.
And I think her comment is certainly not unique in things that we've heard for quite some time now. One of the, the real issues that we have to face as fundraisers for the hospital is to try and separate operational issues from the fundraising side. We try as much as we can to do that, but unfortunately, when it comes down to, right down to the nut, we have things that get in the way of our fundraising efforts because people have had those kinds of experiences, and say, "Well, I'm not giving any money to this kind of thing until it's improved." Well, it's not going to improve unless somebody does, and that's, that's, pardon?
Chicken.
That's right, that's right. So, what comes first? We're doing the best that we can with the, the facilities that we have. I'm glad you had that kind of a positive experience with the staff once you did get treated, but this, we're not asking for pillows for this $100,000. There's a lot of other stuff we're looking for too, but that is part of the whole equipment package. Maybe we do.
Okay, Counselor Wing.
Thanks. I've always been happy to support the hospital. I mean, our community supports our local hospital. We support the GNGH. We don't support, however, the NHS, and I think we need to sort of clear up some questions. Now, when the GNGH Foundation takes these monies and purchases equipment to be used in our hospital, the GNGH Hospital, who owns the equipment that is purchased?
Depending what it's going to be used for, sometimes it's program equipment that everybody uses, sometimes it's purely for our center, but it is purchased by the GNGH on behalf of the GNGH Foundation, on behalf of the NHS. So, I guess it comes right down to it, we own nothing. The building isn't ours. Everything in the building is not ours. Everything that we use in that building is ours to be used for the future. It's not owned by the, the hospital proper, because there isn't one. It's part of a unit. It's one of six different parts of one large unit.
Yeah, I think a lot of people in this community, myself included, have problems with giving money to the NHS. I have a feeling is very strong against the NHS under its current management, in its current form. I think what I'm looking for to be comfortable is written assurance that any equipment purchased for the GNGH with Niagara Falls taxpayers' money is going to stay at the GNGH forever. Like, we want to know that this money that we give to the foundation to purchase equipment is guaranteed in writing to purchase equipment that's staying at the GNGH. We don't want to fund the NHS. We are happy to fund the GNGH. We don't want to fund the NHS in any way, shape, or form. So, my vote in favor of this budget discussions is going to hinge on that written assurance that this will stay at the GNGH.
Okay.
That is something that we cannot give, simply because there will be changes in programming, Centers of Excellence, as they like to call them, being aligned. If we bought something now, and we're asking you to support equipment for the emergency department, so if the, in your wisdom, you see, to come forward with $100,000, we buy that ECG machine that goes in our emergency department, yes, I would guarantee that would stay there, because the emergency department is staying here. If, for whatever reason, council decided they're going to make a donation, but they want it used for a particular piece of equipment, and there's $5 million worth of equipment listed there, and say it was for the Mat Child program, a very contentious program and discussion that's going on, if in five years, if that Center of Excellence is created and centered in St. Catherine's, and we have bought equipment to support the Mat Child program here, but all of those activities move, that equipment will move with it.
I think through you, Mr. Chair, maybe what we should consider is a slight difference in how we do things and get a wish list from the GNGH Foundation about what kind of equipment they would like to see purchased for the Greater Niagara General Hospital. Prioritize, this is the biggest, highest priority item, you know, these are high priority as well, and the city actually purchases the equipment and loans it to the hospital. That way, we can be assured that the money we take from Niagara Falls taxpayers and give to the GNGH Foundation purchases equipment that is only going to be used in Niagara Falls. It will stay here and be owned by the citizens.
Okay, I have Counselor Thompson and Mayor Salsi that wish to speak, please.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on that, and I think that I've been involved in fundraisers in the, in the past where individuals were able to purchase specific equipment that was needed by the hospital. As a result, we, before we make a final decision on, on our budget discussions, we can determine a piece of equipment specifically which we know will be staying there, and I think that would resolve the problem, because I don't think Alderman or Counselor Wing is unique with respect to that. I think there's some very strong feelings with respect to the matter, and I concur with her comments.
Hey, Mr. Chair, through...
Sure, absolutely.
...in the newsletter, second last page, I believe it is, lists the equipment that we're seeking funding for through a number of areas of the hospital. So, to Mr. Thompson's point, is looking at that list, there are items there, and so, for instance, electric beds, 15 at $7,500 each for the Department of Medicine. We will maintain a Department of Medicine. The total cost of those is $112,500. If you look at the critical care ICU, again, there is beds there, six of them at $28,000 each for $168,000. Those are items that will be remaining, so if council should decide in their deliberations, they want to choose things that are specific for this site, knowing that those things will remain, there is a shopping list there for you to, to reference.
Okay, thank you. I have Mayor Salsi.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to qualify that, and I appreciate Mr. Somerville doing so, and I can tell you, I've made my contribution personally, my family's contribution, in support of the foundation, and it's a give and take, and I can tell you, there are benefits that come and go from time to time, and it's a reciprocal matter. We may have equipment that will flow to our site if they do the suggested changes that they're recommending, so it works both ways, and, and I don't know how, how parochial we can be, but I know there are some items, as Mr. Somerville has indicated, we want to upgrade our, our operating room facilities, and we can certainly maybe direct it that way, but it does work both ways, so I wanted to be totally clear on that.
Okay, Counselor Wing.
Just a follow-up question. $50 from every seat sale in the pink section of the Bob Gale Complex is being donated for cancer equipment. Can we get some information on where that money is going to be used and guarantee that it will stay here as well?
I'm afraid not. That's, that's the cancer center in St. Catherine's that's going to be built, the new cancer care complex, where the cardiac care and cancer is going to be looked after for local residents instead of having to go into Hamilton. Those $50 per seat sales are going to that particular project.
Are there any other questions by members of council? Counselor Carrillo, Counselor Mays?
Counselors are cooling like it, maybe we could borrow it for Counselor Fisher before we go back to the budget. Thank you.
Counselor Mays, please.
Yes, that was my concern too, as far as the equipment was concerned, was that it stays here, but I think it's a given that, that St. Catherine's is going to be a cancer wing, and I think we understood that right from the start.
That's no surprise there at all, yes.
But also, I, I have heard several people say they, they prefer that their money for the equipment in Niagara Falls, the equipment stays in Niagara Falls, so I think that is a big concern. Thank you.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to refer the GNGH Foundation's funding request to final budget deliberations. All those in favor? Opposed, motions carried, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next deputation is going to be from the Niagara Falls Board of Museums. Counselor Wing.
I just want to declare a conflict on this. My husband is employed by the Board of Museums.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your worship, members of council, city staff, I'm Gord West, Chair of the Board of Museums. With me tonight, Kathy Powell, the manager, who, as always, is here in support of me, so she can answer any questions I can't. As well, with me tonight, Margaret Mingle and John Harkness from our board. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Since we have been before city council on several occasions this year, we will not take up a great deal of your time, or I will try not to take up a great deal of your time. In the past year, the museums have carried out a number of activities related to its mission to inform and educate residents and visitors about the city of Niagara Falls history through the preservation and presentation of our community's past. The Board of Museums takes very seriously its public trust, responsibility for the care of the city's artifact collection. In the past year, we have worked to safeguard the museum's collections through the improvement of storage conditions, especially at the Willoughby Historical Museum, where new shelving was installed, and a number of objects were rehoused in archivally-stable boxes. It's tough to say after one of the guests this morning, I'm sorry. At the Lundys Lane Historical Museum, routine maintenance has been carried out within the storage spaces. A new furnace air conditioner has been installed on the second floor of the building, and some mold abatement work will be carried out before the end of this year. In addition to collections management, the board also carries out a number of activities whose purpose is to allow for opportunities for the public to interact with our collections and to experience the history of our community. In 2008, these events included the Rural Roots Heritage Fair at the Willoughby Historical Museum, a night at the museum at the Lundys Lane Historical Museum, the Heritage Week Festival at Niagara Square, and partnership with the Municipal Heritage Committee. Doors open, where all four of our sites were open this year, to the public at no charge for the weekend, and the very successful Drummond Hill Cemetery Tours. Over the past year, through outreach, visitation, and website visits, the museums provided heritage services to over 22,000 individuals. In the past year, the Board of Museums has launched our major capital campaign, carried out a concept plan update for the Lundys Lane Historical Museum facility expansion, are in the process of completing a business plan for the Lundys Lane Battlefield Legacy Project. We have applied for grants through the Department of Heritage, excuse me, Canadian Heritage, through the Canadian Arts and Heritage Sustainability Program, the museum's assistance program, and are in the process of completing an application through the Cultural Spaces Program. In 2009, the board plans to continue with its public programming at all three of our sites. This will include a major new exhibition at the Lundys Lane Historical Museum, highlighting, collecting in our community, and improvements to the Drummond Hill Cemetery Tours, which will include taking them to Holy Trinity Church Cemetery in future years for a portion of the time. In 2009, the Lundys Lane Historical Museum will begin the process of condition reporting, photographing, packing, and moving the museum's entire collection to temporary storage in anticipation of the construction beginning in early 2010. The process of moving the museum's collection is a major undertaking, and it is expected that it will not be completed for at least, or for 12 months. Our focus in the 2009 operating year will be on continuing with all public programming while at the same time continuing with securing of funding for the Lundys Lane Battlefield Legacy Project, completing the construction drawings and specifications, and all approvals in order to break ground on the actual construction in early 2010. The board, through the efforts of the 1812 Task Force, will continue its planning for bicentennial celebratory activities, including a Red Geranium campaign in memory of Ruth Redmond, the completion of our GPS tours of the Lundys Lane Battlefield, ongoing outreach to inform people about the importance of the War of 1812 to our community and to our country, and planning and carrying out our second annual celebration of 2012, of the 2012 event. And it is, by the way, not too late to still buy tickets for our this year's gala, November 15th, at the Americana. I'm sure there, we can find some room for those of you who have not yet bought tickets. As you can see from our budget request, we are asking for a relatively modest increase of $24,504 over last year's operating budget. The bulk of this increase can be attributed to staff wages, including an increase in the minimum wage for 2009, as well as a cost of living increase. There will be an increase for the cost of our utilities. There is also an increase in the cost to carry out the board's financial audit and minor increases in public program. We are cognizant, cognizant of the expectation from city council of fiscal responsibility and have shown this through our budget requests and through our consistency in remaining within our allocated budget and managing our finances in a responsible manner. The board appreciates all the support that city council and city staff have shown through the past years, and most especially now for our Lundys Lane Battlefield project. I am now, as always, available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. West by members of council? Counselor Diodati.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question, thank you for the presentation. So, this year, maybe I missed it, is what's the number of weeks? Last year it was, it was 525, and this year I didn't, it wasn't jumping out at me. What's the number this year?
Looking this year, for $513,736.80.
I have to tell you that the, the number 525 is not actually the actual amount that we had for operating. That included some transfers from capital, one of which we didn't actually get approved for. The actual amount that the museum board received operating in 2008 was, or for 2008, $489,233, and for this year, our request is $513,736.
So, an increase of...
Twenty-four, five.
Five hundred.
Thank you.
Mayor Salsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just think it's a very responsible submission and want to congratulate Mr. West and his board for doing an excellent job they've undertaken, as you know, the bicentennial legacy project and done some fabulous work on that, and, and they're in efforts to, to with their ongoing fundraising towards our, the capital project is to be commended as well, so I'd like to refer this matter to budget deliberations.
Okay, refer to final...
as well.
Okay, refer to final budget deliberations by Mayor Salsi and Counselor Diodati. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. West. Thank you, Ms. Powell. Next deputation we have is from Women's Place of South Niagara. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Tom Snodgrass. I'm the fundraising chair for Women's Place of South Niagara. I have with me Dan Brown, our executive director. So the number of women and children who sought refuge in our shelters in fiscal two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, there were two hundred and thirty women and children resided in Nova House, our Niagara Falls shelter. This represents a twenty-five percent increase over fiscal two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. There were a hundred and seventy-two women and children resided in our Welland Shelter. This represents a thirty-three percent increase over the last fiscal year. Our crisis lines received over twenty-three hundred calls. Over five hundred and seventy women were supported through office visits and/or on an outreach basis by our legal advocates, as well as our transitional housing and support program advocates. Prevention, education, and training. The two thousand and five Domestic Violence Death Room Review Committee Annual Report to the Chief Coroner for the Province of Ontario stated that in every case they reviewed that family members, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and/or professionals had some knowledge of the escalating circumstances between the perpetrators and the victims. However, these individuals did not appreciate the significance of the situation, the information or warning signs available to them, or what to do about it. In the Domestic Violence Death Review Committee reports for two thousand and five, two thousand and six, and two thousand and seven, extensive recommendations have been made for the need and requirement for education and training in the community and in the workplace, including the implementation of policies and procedures to address domestic violence as it relates to the workplace. To address this need, Women's Place of South Niagara, Inc. entered into a collaborative agreement with our sister shelter, Jillian's Place, and the Niagara Regional Police Services. We became the lead agency and applied to the Ontario Trillium Foundation for monies for the Family Violence It's Everybody's Business Project. The application requested funding to our project coordinator to facilitate the rollout and implementation of its Everybody's Business Workplace Toolkit and training into various employment sectors such as government, health, education, legal justice, media, and business and labor to help employers understand the impact of family violence in the workplace and assist them in addressing the serious issue. Family violence, it's everybody's business. Given other competing funding priorities, the Ontario Trillium Foundation approved an allocation of one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars over a two-year period. However, this funding does not fully cover the expenses of this project. As outlined earlier, occupancy rates in both our shelters increased by twenty-five percent in Niagara Falls and thirty-three percent in Welland. It is our belief that we need to become proactive. Awareness and prevention through education and training is required to begin to reverse this trend. Therefore, this year, we are respectfully requesting that the city of Niagara Falls approve our funding request of thirty-five thousand dollars. Twenty-five thousand of this request is to assist with the operating expenses of our Niagara Falls shelter. The Ministry of Community and Social Services is expected to provide seventy-four percent of the funding we require, and therefore, we must solicit and fundraise the balance. The remaining ten thousand is to fund the Family Violence It's Everybody's Business Project. Your funding will empower women and children who are citizens of Niagara Falls to access at no cost a menu of services which will support them with the creation and implementation of their own individualized safety and transitional plan to begin to live violence-free lives. In addition, your funding will assist the Family Violence It's Everybody's Business Project to reach out into the various employment sectors in our community to provide training and education and support employees, employers implement workplace policies and procedures. At the end of the day, we all benefit from promoting and providing healthier, safer homes, workplaces in our community. Thank you. Be very happy to answer any questions.
Do I have any questions of Mr. Snodgrass?
Move the final budget deliberations by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Carrillo.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. My last deputation tonight is going to be from YWCA of Niagara Region. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilors, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you about the YWCA. My name is Elizabeth Zimmerman. I'm the executive director for the YWCA, and I do have a PowerPoint presentation. Am I set up to?
Oh, God knows.
There we go. Thank you.
You can click it, or I can click it, whatever works for you.
If you don't mind, that would be great. Thank you. This is just an opportunity to talk about who we are and give you a chance to ask any questions. So we are the, maybe, yeah, next, please? Thank you. We're the YWCA Niagara Region, and we provide program services that support women and children at critical turning points in their lives. Our mission statement is that we are part of a national and worldwide movement that is passionate about empowering women and their families by providing safe, supportive housing and programs, creating opportunities for all women to reach their full potential. We offer support programs, which include an emergency shelter that's located on Colb Street in Niagara Falls, transitional housing programs, a youth transitional housing program, and a women's resource center, which includes our Job Root for Women, which is an employment program. It's the only employment program specific for women in the Niagara region. In this past year, the emergency shelter that houses women and children at Colb Street in Niagara Falls supported two hundred and seventy-eight women. These are women who have lost their housing, so their homes, and their children, so sixty-two children. We're provided with over four thousand nights of shelter at this shelter, and each shelter provides meals, so over twelve thousand meals were provided and snacks for the women and children living in the shelter. The clients that we serve are sixteen years and older. We've had clients as young as sixteen girls on their own, up to into their eighties. We have served women who, senior women as well. Our transitional housing program offers support to women. We have an off-site program that we're operating now in Niagara Falls. We have over nine apartments that are scattered in Niagara Falls. Women are given the opportunity to live independently yet still have supports, so the, generally, it's women that are coming out of our shelters, and it gives them an opportunity to deal with the issues that have led to their homelessness and provide support and connect them with other community resources to help them bridge into a point We offer, with the off-site transitional housing, there is goal-setting sessions, and we do life skills, can be budgeting, cooking, it can be things around like anger management, self-esteem. There's a number of life skills programs that we offer, again, with the goal of helping them to bridge to self-sufficiency and independence. The duration period for the transitional housing is up to one year. At this point, we have eight women and seven children, so we do house some women and children in apartments across the city of Niagara Falls. We are offering now a new program. It's a youth transitional housing program. It's geared more for seventeen-to-nineteen-year-olds. It is life skills-based and is specific to youth. It is housed at the Colb Street site, and again, it is a one-year program. It's a supportive program. There is staff on duty specifically for the youth, seven days a week, and then they have access to the staff that, staff the shelter, which is twenty-four hours a day. The goal is that they will be in school or in a retraining or some program that will lead them to employment. At this point, we have eight young women between ages of seventeen and nineteen that are housed. Our Women's Resource Center, as I said, is our employment program. It's Job Root for Women, and it is the only program that is exclusive to the needs of women looking for employment in the Niagara region. It also provides essential skills, workshops, one-on-one counseling for employment, and helps to build the skills they need to reenter the workforce. This program is also available to women eighteen years and older. During this last year, across, between St. Catherine's and Niagara Falls, we've served over a hundred and six women, and of, I'm sorry, more than a hundred and six women, and of that, a hundred and six women were able to secure employment with the assistance of our staff. Finally, we also do child and youth programs, and it's specific to the children that are in the shelters, and it's an opportunity for them to have some playtime, have a safe environment to deal with their own issues. It's not an easy thing to be without housing, and the children have that, have to deal with that stress as well. So we create opportunities for the kids to have some recreation. And we do a lot of girl-centered programming in the, both in the shelters, and we are doing some community programs. And this past year, we introduced the Power of Being a Girl Camp. It was in St. Catherine's, but we're planning on offering it in Niagara Falls this year, and it's geared to girls between the ages of eight and twelve, which is a very crucial developmental time, and we give them an opportunity to deal with the issues that are specific to their development and to girls in that time. Thank you. That's my presentation. Just, if you have any questions, and certainly, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you and hope that you will understand how important the funds are to us, that will help to ensure that these programs, and particularly the shelter, continue to offer services in the Niagara Falls community.
Thank you, Mrs. Zimmerman. Do I have any questions from members of council? Seeing none, then, yeah, I'll need a motion to move the final budget deliberation by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Mays. Any questions or comments of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Zimmerman.
I should also mention that we did have a presentation by the Women's Place of South Niagara that was supposed to be shown on PowerPoint, but because a certain someone is not too user-friendly with computers, we never actually got to see the presentation, so. Moving on, then, there's four organizations there that, there's additional information for council, and we have no presenters from them tonight, so we're looking to move their funding requests again to final budget deliberations. Motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Mays. Thank you. Any questions or comments of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Under reports, we have F. two thousand and eight forty-two, dealing with the two thousand and seven MPMP, which is the Municipal Performance Measures Program, and I would ask Mr. Harrison if you'd like to open it up.
The Performance Measures, the MPMP, our annual report that we have to provide for provincial measures, this is a required report that we have to do every year. As in previous years, some of the measures have changed, the reporting, the calculations of the measures, and also, too, some of the reporting that we do in our own GL has changed, which has impacted the measures. We've changed the format this year, and we hope to continue to build on it to report in the future. We take performance measurement seriously because it is a useful tool for council to evaluate our service, and certainly, we're looking to improve, build on the measures that we're, that we've provided.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Thompson? I'd like to congratulate the staff on providing this wonderful, wonderful report and having the ingenuity to change things around, to totally confuse and, and to make it almost impossible to understand, and how you would evaluate this and compare it with anything else, I have no idea. I think we need a special course to have the opportunity to understand this and to make comparisons. I, I've been around a long time, and I've read a lot of reports, and, and these reports were confusing in the past, and nothing has changed, so hopefully, there'll be an opportunity in the future to try to understand these, because I can't, I can't really see how we can do a comparison with other municipalities, which I know is difficult anyway, because everybody uses different performance criteria, but this is, I didn't get an awful lot out of it. Maybe I'll have to spend some time with the staff to try to determine how to evaluate this. It's very confusing to me personally. Maybe somebody else feels better about it, but I don't. Okay, thank you. Appreciate your kind words. Counselor Wing?
The one part I definitely could make sense of was where they put percentages, and what I picked up on, the staff were looking at the glass as being three-quarters full. I was looking at it being a quarter empty. According to the Adequacy of Roads measure, twenty-five point seven percent of our roads are in fair or poor condition, and I think that's way too high a number. Or you could interpret it as seventy-four point three percent of our roads being good or very good is being too low, but I really think that the adequacy of our roads isn't where I'd like to see it being.
Okay.
We could use our department charges to fix that.
Any other comments from members of council? Seeing none, then? Looking for a motion to approve the recommendation?
What does that mean? Is it everybody is in the same situation?
We can ask Mr. Harrison if you like. I think the question was whether or not everyone is in the same situation.
Yes, I mean, every municipality has to provide this information to the province as part of our annual reporting. All of the, all of my colleagues that I speak with at the regional level indicate their frustration with some of the information changing, and the, and certainly, we're, we look to provide better information. Certainly, we'll take the time to sit with you, Counselor Thompson, or any of the other councilors that wish to speak more in depthly on this, and we'll provide more information.
Okay, looking for a motion to receive the report and post it on the city's website, moved by the mayor, seconded by Counselor Wing. Any questions or comments of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Do we have any new business for committee? Now, we have a motion by Counselor Diodati, seconded by the mayor, to adjourn. All those in favor? Thank you.